Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, November 20th, 2006. It's on or about 7:30 PM. We do have a quorum with at least, well, all seven members of council present. Communications, does anyone have any communications they wish to share?
I received a report from the street commission, but I haven't had a chance to print it out, and I'll put it in the council chamber if I get change.
I also got that, I did read it.
Okay.
Very interesting, very nice.
Okay, so everybody received it then?
Yeah.
Yeah, Melvin.
Yes.
Anyone else? Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Abel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one item tonight. The, back in 2004, October, council approved the natural hazard mitigation plan, and it's been under review by the Ohio Emergency Management Agency, and they've sent back questions and items that they wanted the committee to do. We responded to that in December of '05. Now they're back and saying, "Everything looks okay," and I have a copy of the report here, but now they need a either amended order, you know, new adoption because it's been changed of council. So I'll give it to planning and development and let the clerk, I guess, maybe have a copy on file, so that if anybody wants to take a look at it, they can.
They said it needs adopted again because...
Well, because it was revised administratively through the review process. I've got a four-page letter of my response to them, spelling out the questions that they had and the revisions that we, the committee made, and now it has to be approved, because it's not an official city document unless council approves it according to them.
Okay. Sure, take a look at it at committee. Member Wild.
So there are lots of changes to that, or...
Yeah, there's.
Okay.
That's why I attached the letter that I submitted to them with Bala Eichenberg's help, that outlines where their questions and what the changes were.
Other comments for the mayor. City Auditor Heck?
No report.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Member Wild.
It looks like we received a liquor permit for a D-5I at Ohio University Park Place, One Park Place. So I have to assume that this is the new student center. And if anybody has a problem with it, they should contact us, I guess.
Other comments? Member Sands.
Can Mr. Wild remind me what a D-5I is?
I don't know offhand. I know the D-5s are serving liquor, but I don't know what an I is.
Institution.
In, probably.
I think it was a new class that really is specific to state institutions.
Is that what it is?
Yes. It's a way to add more liquor permits.
Wonderful.
Above and beyond the number we're supposed to have that are D-5, which we already have too many.
We can get one of these too, right? A D-5I? Where are we, state institutions?
Sit up, we're going to go in the back.
For Halloween.
I didn't answer that question. Debbie did, so I'd refer it to her.
Other comments? Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 12006, an ordinance authorizing funds for engineering and inspection of a water pump station for the Columbus Road Water Project, number 219, and declaring an emergency. Member Bain.
Mr. President, I'd like to move an option of 02006.
Second.
02006 is one of our current big projects in the water fund, taking the water service from the top of the hill down, and I think you can even begin to see some part of that going on, down to the pump station, and this is one piece in that puzzle.
Further comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 12006?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 12306, an ordinance amending the 2006 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 12306.
Second.
We talked about this a while ago in council. This is a request from the courts downstairs from us, actually. They have a grant, underage drinking fund grant, and they need, they would like to move some money from a capital line into a personnel line. $2,500 moved from capital to personnel. It is, it's traditional that they ask us about that.
Further comments on ordinance 123? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinances for second reading. O12406, an ordinance granting an easement to the state of Ohio for installation of electric, fiber optic, cable, and telephone lines on Mill Street. Ordinance 12606, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase two marked police cruisers. Ordinance 12806, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations. Ordinance 12906, an ordinance amending ordinance O2706, establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code. Now ordinances for first reading. O1306, an ordinance suspending the Athens City Code Section 7, '05, '03, continuous parking in the same location during the period from November 24th, '06, to December 31st, '06, and declaring an emergency. Member Wild.
I'd like to move 13006 under suspension.
Second.
The reason for this is that the timing of this will be a suspension of the parking, 24-hour parking rules between 24th of this month to December 31st.
We have a motion of second to suspend the rules on ordinance 13006. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of...
I just have...
I'm sorry. Member Sands.
Section 2 says this is an emergency for health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Athens, and I'm...
At a loss.
I'm at a loss for suspension with regards to the health, or the safety, possibly the welfare.
I would probably put it under welfare of the residents of the city. Since they wouldn't get tickets that way.
Oh, I remember a time when he used to sit down there and discuss all sorts of such things.
I know, spending it on the first time.
Boy, I have a lot of this opportunity to remind you.
Well, the welfare that they don't have to keep.
Oh.
Is your point well made, Mr. Sands?
Oh, it's made.
Okay. Other comments on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on 13006?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules are suspended.
I move adoption of 13006.
Second.
Okay, this we discussed in committee, was it last week or a week before?
Last week.
Okay.
Last week.
Such a long week, I guess. Essentially, this has been brought up by some of the residents who do not have off-street parking. The parking, the rationale was discussed last week, being that we have, we do not have a problem with parking during off-season, when the school is out of session. We discussed, actually, just writing in the, when school was out of session. I think the interpretation from Gary, who was listening in, or Debbie, I believe, was that this would be a trial period, and we may as well just put the dates to it. The other discussion I had was that I think there's actually a small session that's in between during break, that's an intercession. So it would kind of get it fuzzy when it's in or out of session. This will be a one-time try. If we get a lot of negative feedback, we won't do it again. If we, if we get no problems with it, I will probably bring something similar to this for the spring break, with the idea that we put in some different wording. Either leave it up to the administration on the timing, or when it is out of the regular session of Ohio University. I have gotten some feedback from about five different people. One against it, four for it. So that's where I am right now.
I just realized, now, this means that someone could park in the same location between the 24th to the 31st. You don't have to move your car ever. Because I was going to say, it could be that one could say you could park there a week.
Oh, absolutely.
At the moment, at the moment, it's a six-week break.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. To see how this works.
Yeah. So if somebody really wanted to just move all their cars there and leave them on the street for six weeks, they could.
Probably. Although I just read the police report, a lot of people lost their mirrors on West Washington, so I don't know how long you want to look, leave your cars anyplace in particular. The other thing is that it's really to allow people to get out and walk, rather than move their car every 24 hours.
Or for students to...
He's the president, talk to him.
I also had a few calls, and basically worrying about what the outcome might be, and concern that, in one case, the person did not have off-street parking themselves, and concern that they would suddenly not have a place to put their car for six weeks. I'm all about trying things in a different way, and seeing what the result is instead of guessing, and I think this is worthy of a try, and if people find it problematic, then we won't play again.
Contact us.
It seems like an opportunity to try something different.
Amy.
I, too, am in favor of it, just to try something. Obviously, I think a lot of the complaints that I got this year involved the 24-hour, getting violations for the 24-hour parking, not having parking on the street. But as a trial period, how exactly are we going to keep track of if this works, or how it's working, or if we want to continue to do this in the future?
I assume that if somebody doesn't like it, they'll tell us. All three of us are transportation committee.
Right.
I'm also assuming that the administration will hear one way or the other as well.
Okay.
And really, the problems I could see is somebody's storage parking in front of somebody's house for a long period of time, where they have a problem with it. The one person who was against it was worried about parking illegally in some place for a long period of time. And I pointed out, we're not suspending all the parking.
Right.
We're just suspending this particular one.
Paul, and while I've made some fun of this, I, it probably is an okay thing to try. I just remember being on council when I was getting a phone call from a lady that lived on Franklin, had to park on State, carry a sack of groceries in one hand, a baby in the other, on icy streets to, two blocks up, to, you know, get close to. And when we did pass the laws that we had, those were the reasons. Because when people literally do not need to take their car down to whatever long-term storage area they had, they don't. And also, those that come in and work at OU all day, and maybe leave them. But anyway, it's worth a try. Maybe during these periods of time, that won't be too much of a problem. Mr. Sands.
I, also, I didn't get that call about two blocks, which were all uphill, by the way.
Yeah. In both directions.
But I think, I heard lots of people who were in favor of this step, and I haven't heard that many people complaining about it, to be honest. And they haven't complained to me, maybe they, so I, I still think, as I said last week, if it ain't fixed, let's, if it ain't broke, let's don't fix it. So I think it's an unnecessary step.
Carol.
Just to shed the balance, another person that I have talked to said they're concerned. They also live in an area where they do not have off-street parking, and this means we can go to see granny for three days and not worry about what do we do with the car so it doesn't get ticketed while we're gone. And, and that's more what we're trying to solve than, you know, having somebody walk your car as well as your dog while you're gone. That, it doesn't seem like that's quite the purpose of what the 24-hour rule means.
And at the same time, for the 17 years I lived on State, I lived with somebody that did get several of those tickets, when he chose not to move the car every day, and I faced the heat on that. But, you know, that was part of the price you paid for always being able to find a place to park. Paul.
Okay, and realize, we could always revisit the hang tags, if you think that would fix the problem. Again, that, the logistics of that got pretty...
It really did. The hang tag things creates a bureaucracy that is unbelievable, because then you get into the, who in the house gets it, how many per house, how do you hand them out?
Tracking.
The people that's going to police it, how do they do it? Yeah. And on and on. Other comments? I think we're up to adoption.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 13006?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted.
I'd say opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance 13106, an ordinance authorizing the mayor can enter into a contract for the operation of the Athens City Transportation City System for a period commencing January 1, '07, and declaring an emergency. Member Patterson.
This is just what the title says, to allow for us to have a new contract. The contract that we currently have is running out at the end of December, and this is to have seamless service.
Okay. Are we looking for adoption, possibly at second reading?
Yes.
Okay. Other comments? Paul.
The sta, what is the status of the bids right now?
They're still being reviewed, and we're dealing with ODOT as well on some technicalities.
Okay. Other comments? Ordinance 13206, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23 zoning code to provide the Municipal Arts Commission must recommend murals. Okay. Member Patterson.
Mr. President, this ordinance is just to amend a previous ordinance to reflect what's really happening, only to put city council back in the loop. I mean, they were there, we just didn't know that. And, and so, one of the residual effects is going to be that because this law was already on the books, we need to go back and pick up a few murals that already are up, that that were put up while this was in existence. For example, the quilt squares on Barnes, there are three of them within the city, and those will all need to go through the process, with the Arts Commission reviewing it with an ad hoc committee, and then making the recommendation to council.
Member Bishop.
Can we grandfather those in?
I don't see how you can grandfather it, when the law already said council had to vote on it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. It isn't that, the commission part, you could, but that wouldn't accomplish anything.
So quilts are considered murals? It's any type of...
Well, those are murals.
Okay.
That, they're the very large squares painted on the barns, and they definitely are murals.
Okay. It shows that I don't know as much of the sign ordinance as I should. I thought I knew a lot more on that.
Well, I was caught by surprise on it, too, because we had talked about it, but I hadn't actually, you know, gone back to the code to look to see what it said, and there it was.
Does this mean we could possibly vote down that mural on Stimson?
We voted...
And make it go away?
That was approved by council.
Mm-hmm.
And that was how this all came about, that we needed a process, rather than just council sitting here saying, yes, no, yes, no.
Amy, did you wish to comment?
No.
Sorry.
She's just not allowed to say.
You don't care to weigh in on this one?
I'd like to.
Further comment on ordinance 132? O13306, an ordinance closing park place and a portion of the intersection of Mulberry and South Court Streets on Saturday, February 10th, '07, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, for the grand opening celebration of the new Baker Center at Ohio University. Member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance, as you stated, closing a small portion of the streets in front of the new Baker Center. It's a dedication ceremony that they're having in February. It is just closing the streets from 9:00 to 1:00, and this is at the request from the Service and Safety Director. And my sources tell me that there is a basketball game on Saturday, but not until 2:00.
Further comments? Member Wild.
So it, it requires more than just a parade. I see they're having a band at the Marching 110 here, so it's going to be a band stand, as well as a band and everything else.
When I talked to Ray about what they would need in terms of setting up, he just said barricades, he didn't say anything about...
Anything else?
Stage, no. But I can check.
Well, that's okay.
Yes.
I just want to comment that it's refreshing that it's here and plenty of time to go through three readings and to wait the 30 days, all of that.
Yeah, that was...
I don't know quite how to handle legislation under such, such rules.
Property procedure.
Other comments? Member Wild.
Since we own some property here, do we have to run seat on this?
There's no property left.
I thought we had a hillside there.
If you float there, though.
We can fill it in, we have plenty of time to fill it in.
I think we could re-establish our choice. Ordinance 13406, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 7 traffic code pertaining to handicap parking penalties. Member Flowers.
Mr. President, this is an ordinance amending our previous ordinance on the handicap parking penalties. This is to further deter people from parking in the handicap spaces, of which are already limited in the Uptown area. We'll be increasing the fine from $100 to $250, which is also in compliance with state law, state code, excuse me, and with the fine of increase to, from $150 to $350.
Further comments? Heather Hefty-Pine. Ordinance 13506, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide. Member Bain.
Mr. President, O13506 is an annual event where we purchase the various materials. We allow expenditures to a certain amount, as you can see, 199,000, almost 200,000, and it's allocated from the various funds that consume chlorine, fluorine, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide.
Other comments? Ordinance 13606, an ordinance authorizing the cleaning and repair of water wells. Member Bain.
Mr. President, another annual item. We have perhaps as much as a 10-year cycle on cleaning wells, and we authorize the Service Safety Director to take care of that, and it's handled, as you can see, for $45,000. We have two wells out of our multiples, including...
Just curiosity, do we still have the same gentleman from OU that heads that up for us? We used to get a real deal out of that.
No.
Oh. My condolences to his family. Announcement's another business. Committee meetings, anyone? Member Fox.
I need a planning and development committee. We have a few items here. One is the minor lot split on Carroll Road. One is the revocable license request regarding the sign. People expressed a desire to actually read this packet of materials and talk about it again, so I'll ask folks to do that before the meeting.
Which one is that, the sign?
The budget host sign, which I thought people weren't interested in, but it sounds like people might be. So read the packet. We also have a rezoning request from Tom Lovdahl. Is this, do we have a recommendation on this? This is, okay.
No.
We're not ready for that one. And I have a letter that I'm going to copy for everyone, requesting that we reconsider a previous recommendation about rezoning the end of Court Street, to make the zone be the same for the whole length of Court Street. So I'm going to collect all the documents related to when that came before us before, as well as the new letter that I've received, and we'll have some time to talk about that.
Member Bain.
There was one, one item that Debbie brought up that I thought needed. With respect to the sign, it's a sign, and I don't want to, I just heard Amy take a sharp intake of breath, but I would like to have some evidence that the sign that's proposed will solve the problem that you all say exists. And I think that the size, and the visibility, and all those other things have to be taken into account by someone who is an expert in that area, because I think that a simple advertising sign is what we're talking about, and it's been made into something more than, you know, that was going to solve all those problems. And I want to make sure that it will, in fact, do that, and I still probably won't vote for it. That's okay. Is that better? Yes.
Other comments? Number Flowers, let's start at that end.
Transportation Committee, miscellaneous. I'm sure something will come up.
Arts and Recreation, I'd just like to do another little chapter in the Halloween to keep at that, instead of spending six hours on one night. And what I'd like to do at that meeting is fill you in concerning the very lengthy conversation I've had with the officials at Madison, and so it'll be an information dissemination.
Member Sands.
Finance Committee meeting. I'm pleased to discover, through Ms. Flowers, that we do have another committee meeting in November to talk about budget issues, so I'm sure we'll be discussing those quite a bit next week.
Good. Other comments? Any other announcements? Now, opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we have not covered on tonight's agenda. Seeing no one and having...
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I apologize, please.
Yeah.
Come up to the podium. We ask that you state your name and your address, please.
My name is Brady Wilson-Haw. I live at 120 Shady Lane in the Plains. First of all, I'd like to apologize, because I am not a public speaker. One of my neighbors had all of the information, and unfortunately, her head got stuck at the last minute, so instead of just being here for support, I'm now doing the job here. We came to city council meeting last year to ask about our road. We have about .2 miles of road on Shady Lane in the Plains. We purchased our, our land in 2001. We have three other neighbors and one gentleman who owns seven lots of land on the same stretch of road. When we first looked into choosing the land, our road was, like many of the roads in the Plains, not well-kept up, but we called the, and I apologize for not having some of my exact information straight. We called, I can't recall whether it was the city council office or the county developer. At the time, we, we found out who to call to ask about a road bond. We were assured that a road bond was in place, and we were explained that that meant that our road would be taken over for maintenance. Based on the recommendation that the road bond was in place, and that, that gave us some protection, we bought our land, as did our neighbors. The road went on to not be taken over by the, by the county, not taken over by the city, just not taken over. We came to a county meeting, and the county said that they weren't responsible for us because we were within three miles of city limits. So we came to the city council meeting. I apologize, this is what we were told. The county just threw us out, said nothing. So we came to a city council meeting, and you good folks listened to us, and wrote a letter to our developer, and our developer promised, promised, promised he was going to pave the road. Now, at this point, almost two years has gone by, no, nothing has been done, and now our developer has gone bankrupt, and the bank has now taken over. We are, I mean, we're at a loss. I brought some pictures I wanted to share with you. Our road is falling apart. These pictures show how there's just dirt.
Like dirt.
But more than our concern for the road falling apart is, is our safety. The developer was, was perfunctorily taking care of the road, sand here and there. Now we'll have no one. It's a very shady lane, shady lane is.
Shaky, shady.
The, the snow melts down off of the hillside and covers our road, and when it's cold, it's ice. It's, it's like an ice rink. And there's no way that we can simply salt, you know, we could salt for days and days and days. There are seven children that live up on our hill, my little son who's two months old. My neighbors had to call the ambulance last winter, and they could not make it up, so they had to drive their child down the road to meet the ambulance, to take their child to the hospital. We've called the fire department and said, "What happens if there's a fire on our road?" And they said, "Well, we'll do whatever we can to get up there." And I asked the firemen to come out and look, and he said, "There's no way we could make it up that hill." We don't know what else to do. You know, our taxes are raised every year, and we don't resent paying taxes, but we're, we can't sell our house. I mean, my husband and I want to move, and we can't sell our house. No one will buy a house when it's falling apart.
I would suggest that maybe we can at least review it at our next street committee meeting. Mayor Abel, I don't know if you're able to speak to this one at all, or are you familiar with it?
I'm familiar with it. We turned it over to the law director some time ago. I know he sent me an email, and I re-brought it up with him a week or two ago because of a couple complaints. And he's scheduled a meeting next week with the county commissioners to discuss it, and that's as much as I know right now.
We were told by someone in your office, and I don't have the name, but, I mean, she was very nice, but she told us that she was afraid that our only recourse was to sue. To sue! I mean, you're our representatives. I mean, you're our representatives, you know, we just want somebody to watch out for us.
Okay.
Okay?
I will ask that it be added to our next street committee agenda, and we can at least discuss it and go over the status and what possible things that can be done. Maybe we can ask the law director for a status at that point, check on if there was a bond, and hopefully, if you could leave your name and address with our clerk, possibly we can get you a letter, at least knowing what, if anything, we can do at this point for your situation.
And maybe part of the research we can do in between is talk to the county commissioners, because I know we had an issue about a little tiny piece of a road that wasn't being maintained that was within the city limits, and that was a long drawn-out process to resolve, where we wanted to take it over and maintain it. If it's not within the city limits, I'm surprised that commissioners are not.
If it's within the three-mile limit and what they're referring to, or the things we have to take very serious as far as, you know, any subdivision ordinance things and collecting the bonds for the roads and making sure that they go into, how many times have we been here before? So it's a, you know, I have to hearken back to the times that we have been chastised by people for getting involved in things outside of the city limits, and what you folks are going through are the reasons, case in point, that we do have the laws read the way that they do in case we ever would annex your area in, but...
So who holds the bond also? Who, if there is one?
Do we have a bond?
We did, but the bond expired, and the person's gone bankrupt. Usually, they purchase a bond for a period of time, is most of the way it does. And then usually, the county engineer's office is the one that does the inspection of it, because he acts on behalf of the township trustees, who would probably actually anchor the township road. But it's another one of those problems where, when a bond expires and people walk from it, there's no teeth within the code of the city or state law that, you know, you can unplat the property or do anything. I mean, it's reminiscent of a similar problem that we've had now within the city.
Rick? Is there a way, I seem to recall, Ohio Vice Code gives us a timeline for that bond. Is there any way to lengthen that bond to make it more useful for us? I mean, roads don't deteriorate overnight, but it's, what, a two-year?
There's supposed to be a two-step bond process. One is for the construction of the road. At the point in time, in this case, the county engineer deems it appropriate to accept it, that bond would expire, and then you would get a two-year maintenance bond. So that even though it is, then the counties or the townships, whichever one they decide from the standpoint of snow removal and such, then any structural problems that are found in the road, that bond should take care of in that two-year period, the maintenance bond. Then when it expires, it's the townships to repair. What happens in this case is we have to go all the way back to the beginning, that the bond expired, the developer did not renew it, refused to renew it, and we don't know, that's why we turned it over to the law director to say, what, is there any recourse within our code or state code? And now, as Tammy has said, the bond has, the developer has filed for bankruptcy. So there usually isn't much asset there to go after to get recourse of the bond. Now, ultimately, who comes down to the responsibility is what they're asking, is it the city that, you know, should put in the roadway surface, or is it the county? And the county's told them, no, and so what Gary wants to do, your law director, is have a meeting with the county officials and see, you know, review the law and see what, where does the responsibility lie.
I'm not, I don't know Shady Lane, where, what developer was that and where development was?
It's had a series of developers. I think the first developing area got bought out by another at some point in time. It was originally...
Shawstek and Spesa?
Really?
Yeah.
And who owned the bond then at that point? Was it just a bonding bank or some...
I'd have to look that up. I don't, you know, I know a bond was filed because we had to have that in order to file a plat. That's our normal course. We have to have that in hand before we will ever file a plat.
Should the township trustees also be involved in this conversation? Dover? Is it Dover Township?
I think.
I don't know if it's Dover that's playing. I think it's Athens at that, because I think Dover starts around sunset.
My students have replanted a few times.
But anyway, I mean, what we can try, I think it is after your next meeting, but the law director is, I don't know if he's assigned this to one of his attorneys, I bet he's personally going to meet with the commissioners about it, but I can inquire if there's any update to where his research in the law has been.
You know, introducing legislation to pay for roads that were improperly put in years ago and not too awfully long ago, we had to totally rebuild some roads within the city at great expense for very small amounts of pavement that really had no base foot in properly by another developer at a prior time. Just gives us one more example of how people are hurt if this really isn't guarded closely. I'm very sorry for what you're going through, but we will take a look at it at next committee meeting. No, and the gentleman over there that was taking very good notes, I think maybe you ought to grab on his way out of the room tonight and see if you can...
And your pictures, give him your pictures.
Yeah. Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council tonight, Carol?
I just wanted to ask the question, I'm assuming that the township does the winter maintenance on Shady Lane? Would that be correct?
I don't think anybody's doing it. From what she's saying, no one is maintaining it, because it's not been an accepted road.
So no one plows it? Well, who plows the other roads in the Plains?
Township.
The township.
Township. Usually, what we do is, if we have a road within the city that has not been accepted yet, like, take for example Oakmont Three before it had a final paving on it.
Right.
We entered into an agreement with the developer that we would go ahead and salt it or send it or plow it, whichever was appropriate, but we'd send them the bill, which he then paid. But, I mean, it's the difference between a good developer that has the finances and the good backing and meets his commitment, and those that do not.
Yes.
I just wanted to address your question about the pay, or the road maintenance. Our road is sort of shaped like the mayor's table here, and it goes up and in around a corner. There's approximately a mile for the full length, and they, they take care of it all the way up to the crack in the table, and then they just turn around and go back, and leaving our little point two out. And it's so frustrating to see the salt trucks and the embers come up, because you're just like, just come on a little, just a little further. But they actually dump tons of embers in doing a U-turn because there's no good place to do it, and those embers could quite easily just be on our road. So, I mean, I realize that it's a, it's a regulation point, but the cost of the embers, I mean, the amount that they lose there is a move. That's all.
Are there any other comments? Ms. Bishop.
I just wanted to follow up on what you said about the, you know, in the past, there have been roads that had, whatever proper term is, you know, insufficient underneath the paving, and I believe that is a problem in many other, how do we, how do we guard against that? I believe that's true, frankly, in my subdivision, the way the road was constructed. Now, how do we guard against that when developers are building the roads?
Well, there's two different problems here, but Jenkez, one is, based upon the soil conditions, you figure out what bases need, and the engineer gives you that data under their calculations. What we do in the city and have for the last ten-plus years is we assign one of our maintenance technicians to inspect at various times on that particular road being constructed. We also ask that soil test borings be done and turned over to us. And all of that, that was done on every road that's been constructed in the last ten years. Now, what will sometimes happen is a developer will start at the beginning of the road, get to a point, say, oh, that's my phase one, come accept this road. And at that time, the road's fine, well, then they then continue to build more, bringing the heavy trucks all over, which most roadways are not designed, you know, you design it so that probably the heaviest vehicle that you're talking about is a garbage truck, and that's once a week, it's not a continual use. If you're doing continual construction, then that road gets more torn up, and then if it's outside of the maintenance period of it, then you can sometimes get stuck, and that's why we extended our maintenance at our recommendation from one year to two years just a few years ago. In the other phase, like Oakmont Phase Three, the developer never put the final course down because he realized that not enough houses had been built, and there would be a lot more on it, and he'd be in that same type of problem, and so he waited to do the final course until, I think, eighty percent of the homes were built, somewhere around that figure, then did it, turned it over to us, the two years kicked in, but...
Well, I'm just thinking, should we, as a city, have stricter, you know, kind of road-building codes? In other words, rather than planning for like the least common denominator, you know, plan for, you know, heavy use. I mean, it doesn't, I know it's a delicate balance, but it seems as if, you know, the way, you know, whatever, for some reason, many of our roads are falling into disrepair, and maybe we ought to take a little more care during the development phase if we can, that's all, have stricter standards.
I think that's something the council considers, stricter standards on it. I think that each, each one does present its own set of issues, because in some cases, when you do an annexation, for example, our most recent in University Estates, you accept a chip and seal armitage road. Well, that's already been an accepted road, been there by, for many, many years. As construction occurs out there, will something potentially happen to it? That possibility is there, but I'm not sure how you would put that into our codes, you know, to do it, because the usage factor has changed, the road standards have certainly changed. One of those that we had a number of years ago was the L H Phil Road, when we annexed there. It was a township road. One of the roads the developer built off of it failed, and we had to do, but we also recognized after a period of time we needed to upgrade that. Fortunately, we were able to get state-issue two funds for that, so it lessened the cost to the city, but those are very real problems, they're there.
Yeah. I just want to go back to something.
And trying to figure out how to address them in modifying our code is the legislative task that is tough.
Yeah. Did I hear you say that some developers, like, when it's inspected, like, the first part of the road is inspected, and then after it's inspected, the developer says, oh, great, and then they build the second part of the road, and it may not be up to the same standard?
No, the second part's up there, but it's now had this heavier traffic on it. So one of the things you might look at it changing is, we won't accept the road until it's completed in total.
Right. Which makes perfect sense.
But right now, that's, that's open.
Yeah.
So that you can partially accept the road, even if, and you could have a main road that was totally completed and done, but there's cul-de-sacs off of it.
Yeah, but I think that's something you can...
That where unbuilt houses are, so at what point do you assume what degree of responsibility, and how long do you want to keep the bond? Those are all valid questions that the committee could, could, could talk about, I will...
And more of a committee-type discussion.
Yeah, it's really a committee discussion. That's the type of thing you do.
See, that's why we put this in. See, you knew something was gonna happen.
It's really planned and developed.
Yeah. It's in the subdivision rights. If you want to read the subdivision rights and look at the vote controls before, then we can put that on the agenda.
Unfortunately, I will not be here next week, but I, but it is something I'm interested in for a future...
Is there any other comments or anyone else wishing to speak before council? Seeing none and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.